First could be to our agenda. I have a couple of changes on the agenda already. I would like to add a 9A item from the tree board on some trees that need to be taken down. And a second, predictive session for pending litigation or evasion. Any other changes on the agenda? Is there a motion on the agenda?
What's the second one?
It's pending litigation. Who's requesting that right now? Do we have a motion on the agenda with the changes?
On the agenda.
On the agenda.
Your motion?
Second.
The second. There's a motion and a second. Any other changes on the agenda? Number four, all in favor of approving the agenda as change, say aye.
Aye.
Both, no one? Now we have a bunch of minutes to approve. Approval minutes, we have three sets. We have the public hearing from April 22nd on the Bishop Dodd. The select board meeting on April 22nd and the select board meeting on May 6th. Select board. Second. Any changes or corrections on any of those minutes? All in favor of approving those minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Minutes are passed. Item 3, town manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I prepared my report and it's been published with Board Packet. I guess by way of update, I would just want to confirm that it mentioned that there was that scheduled meeting regarding bio swales that had been scheduled for Saturday morning. It did occur as planned. We had about 16 people there learning from the naturists to design the rain gardens initially for both of the engineering firms. And so we have a plan going forward with the town's participation and support and with the support of this volunteer group and the confirmation from the engineering companies that this in fact is how most communities in Vermont would choose to maintain the function and aesthetic appearance of the rain gardens. This morning, we did go around and take some pictures of the garrel installations that happened late last week. I sent those in email this afternoon to the select board. So those were accepted by our Iowa Division Chief during the disorder. They're in good condition. And last thing to add, oh, I guess it was regarding the shade treatment that we'll talk about later. That was a request from the town tree board. I'd be answering your questions.
Questions from the board?
How about for you? Is there an update on the ARPA, the tail sole and the honeybowl? Have they updated that one?
There's no change whatsoever. Just what you said before, no.
Any idea when final bill is going to come in?
At this point, I'm not exactly sure when we'll find out.
Okay. I noticed in your town net, or we're running investment 3.5% right now?
It's not, it appears that way, but it's not that way. Be happy to explain. So the reason that, and I did send the select board a detailed budget status report late last week with some commentary about it. The reason that the budget expenses do look like they are ahead of the budget forecast is because the operating budget that the town adopts is what we use to expend for materials and labor and services that the town provides throughout the year. If we just were considering those elements, we would not be ahead of projected expenses for the budget. The reason that it looks higher than was projected and is higher than projected is because of running several non-budgeted expenditures through the budget. For example, this floor was $50,000 something thousand. It was not budgeted. It was not all the expense of the town because of grants that were received in the participation of friends at town hall. But the town treasurer has that whole $50,000 as an expense on the buildings and grounds with some offsetting revenue on the top side. And there are a number of examples of that. I think some of them are, some of them would tend to understate the spending. For example, $30,000 of the board allocated from ARPA to the Esperport resurfacing, that's been received as revenue on the top side that they've not expended yet. So I talked with the town treasurer today actually about all of these kinds of things. And she had independently been working on like a projection for May and June, which is ready to be sent to the select board. Did she send it to the select board? It would have been late September. Okay, so she perhaps just sent it to me at this point. And she has the projected two months along with all of the notes for, there's several notes that say something to the effect of needs to transfer to another client, meaning not be reflected as a general funding expense.
Am I correct in understanding that like even though we think of the budget as, you know, pretend we're 100% at the beginning of the year and we use up, we think that like we're going to spend it in a straight line going down over the course of the year, if that makes sense? But really, the way that it happens is you spend a bunch, then it catches up, and then, you know, I'm imagining that the spending doesn't go into tidy.
It does not. For example, the highway expenses are much higher than the dirt.
Right.
The recreation expenses are much higher as we approach summer.
So.
So those kinds of things, you have the seasonal rhythms too.
So if we took a snapshot at any moment, it may or may not be on target with the budget, but we're looking at the trend for the year. Does that kind of?
Yes, and the reason that I include a snapshot in my town manager's report is because I think it's helpful, having sat on board. I think it's helpful if every two weeks you get to see basically this is where the budget is. If you only get that news once a quarter from the town treasurer as she compares it in detailed financials, I think those anomalies can tend to be exaggerated. But over the course of the year, if you kind of have your finger more on the pulse of it, I think it will make more sense. The plan or the projected two months that Sue sent to me this afternoon, it does seem to indicate that there will not be a deficit, there will be a very small surplus if the projections hold for the next six weeks. There's only three more warrants and bills to pay. One more for May and two for June. And then we do often have some expenses that were incurred late in the year but get billed in July or in August.
Thank you.
How would buildings and grounds generate revenue?
So it generates revenue, for example, the $40,000 that the insurance company settled with us for the chimney, that's a buildings and grounds revenue line this year. The $35,000 approximately that friends at town hall donated for this floor, that becomes buildings and grounds revenue line for this year, things like that. And there's a small amount in there for actual like mental fees of town parks and facilities. And we don't often, we don't often earn those mental fees. We have a lot of people who use our parks and facilities. Those are kinds of exceptional cases.
On you, Mr. Chair. That's Bietrane, appointed a municipal project manager.
I'm still municipal project manager. Bietrane currently has easements ready while they're looking over easements. There was a problem with the easement with the drive-through railroads, which is why they have not returned to us yet for it so they can right away. So right now, I'm still municipal project manager.
I didn't hear you go out on a, I'm curious to point out that.
It's in, it's in Bietrane's hands right now.
Okay.
Any other comments from the board? I just wanted to highlight two items also that are on there. I just wanted to thank the tree board. They have senior senate for every day and also Tim Leary for the faculty people in and bringing back amazing home trash. Pick up around the town and grab it. It's great to see the volunteers are still happening up around town. So thank those people. Now I will open it up to the public for questions to the town manager. Yes, Tim, who?
Is there any way you could add to your tracker? You're talking there's a 1% fund, but you've already designated certain projects that are going to get so much each year. Is there any way you can add that to the goal? Two meetings ago, you, someone stated that $10,000 was coming over this every year. And then maybe the, if the budget passes, the, you're paying a hundred thousand per goal. Could you indicate that, just make that bigger so that way you don't forget that you're already allocating X amount each year of that fund?
So the board did mention a vote of $100,000 for paving and that to be reflected. What was the $10,000 that you mentioned?
I don't know. I didn't know about it until we guys talked about it like two meetings ago.
I don't, they don't recall the $10,000 incurred vote.
No, it wasn't two weeks ago. You mentioned that it had been approved previously and I never knew that. I'll go back and look at the minutes.
I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not remembering something.
For the parish study?
For the one?
For the parish study?
Well, that's very, I cannot go to the project tracker.
That's not bringing a bell, Jim.
I'll go back to the committee.
Any other questions from the public for the town manager? Okay, we're moving on. Item four on the agenda is the rec department's report.
This is my report for 10, May 15. All sessions and sort of items at Brandon are open for registration. They'll run a lease in June 24th, July 15th, and July 29th. The popularity of October 3rd Brandon rec bus trip to Seattle cannot be overstated. Two fellow buses sold out in less than 48 hours. The wait list was created and now we have an airbus that is nearly full. These trips are in partnership in parking lot only with the Robin and West Robin rec departments. Safety rules postponed will be reconstituting this event to be a more white promotional event. We work with the Brandon Area Bike Association and other organizations. Stay tuned. At the last meeting, select person either here asked for a breakdown of baseball facilities that were not from Brandon. Forty-three non-resident baseball registrations. We collected $387 of non-resident fees and extra $90 per person. Breakdown of residency from the top three towns were 17 from Leicester, 17 from Weyden, and five from Sudbury. Temporary practice field will be installed at Esteprock on the drive-in site to help with the name of crowded field space. Name for building to grounds and I met with Jeff Zangla for Vermont Tennis Court Servicing at Estepro last week and a quote is coming for the plastic resurfacing lining road, not inclusive of the asphalt. I met with Faber about placement of a summer work experience to help ability to grounds. This is a work training program for ages 17 to 24. The Brandon Idol finale is being held at the Brandon Town Hall on Friday, May 17. $50 per person. The 2024 winter will be crowded. Out of valley is holding their angle volunteer day. It's a project we are targeting for their meaningful service. Centering ability to spread some chips in the playground. Downtown moles spread in the parks. Estepro Park chips spread, paint painting tables. At the wastewater treatment plant, your hand building, possible cleanout organized in another building. And the National School Ball Field, we're going to paint the snapshot as my report.
Questions from the board or the rec director? Hey, Juan Gil, I just was wondering, later in the morning, I saw a couple of items that were for uniforms. I'm assuming those are baseball originated, but I don't know. And I was wondering if those are covered in sponsorships or any other way?
Yes, so we receive, obviously solicit, not, I would say that's supposed to be, people step up. People step up and sponsor, they have 14, 14 teams, 14 sponsors, a couple double divers sponsor two teams, like Black County Builders and McCullough always sponsors three baseball teams. So yes, their sponsors are awesome that ask.
Thank you. Questions for the rec department director from the public? Non-herd, moving on. We have a public comment and participation. If it's not on the agenda, go stand with the board. Does the board remember anything that's not on the agenda they would like to document? Public agenda, public. Karen, you know?
Karen, if you press the button on that microphone so that Zoom can hear you.
I can tell for sure.
Yeah, it's on.
Okay, great. Well, I'm going to start out with what I think, or I consider some of the reasons, my house has sold. And it's a really nice artistic couple that was from England and moved to Florida and is dying to get back to New England and heard about the art in Seoul was random and so was very excited to be coming here. And they should be here around August 1st. And that means that I won't be participating in public get out pride anymore after I leave and have a friend. And in fact, we're wiped out after this meeting. So this isn't the long goodbye bill, but it is a little bit of the context and I would just like ask one question of the board. I want to say that all the things that have happened lately have given me quite a new perspective. And when I say I'm here, I'm disappointed, I'm saying I'm very disappointed in all of us. The message is for people here in the room, people on Zoom, people at the table. I went home taking care of my parents. Those of us that had an opportunity to participate in budget meetings mostly didn't turn up. We were too busy. And so we all some of them are just, just dislike the path of budget best time. Members of the budget committee for all the hard work that you did, some of you kept calling for a line by line review, but others of you didn't. And I think it's too bad that you didn't keep asking for that. But the group that I'm most disappointed in, that is this one board, at the intro meeting before the April 30th vote, one of you said, and I'm going to quote here, "We already put in about 15 hours on nights and weekends to revise this budget." Guess what? That's the job. Guys wanted the power, we gave it to, we got it to the work. And here's something else, 15 hours. Honestly, citizens of our town will be putting in overtime and taking second jobs and maybe losing their homes. And these things do happen. And we didn't start the great state of Vermont's tax fixation. And we can't cure it all here, but there is still a ton of fat raised in that budget. So what are we going for 15 hours? I'm disappointed because a member of the select board told me that the vote for proposed budget number three was being separated by the school budget, from the school budget revote because it would give the town a better chance of passing our budget quickly. Don't couple them up, that would make a budget vote go undead, yes. I'm not going to be mean, but I want to tell you, I have noticed. I record these conversations, I'm pecking them so long or the other. I'm not lying and if somebody puts, you know, a point or two in the item folder. I'm disappointed because the chief did not put an honest description of what happened on April 30th after the meeting and his report. An officer served a no trespassing warrant. It was a friendly counsel, a warrant was served to someone in town for behavior of listening to residents. The reporter, I'm sure, would not miss voter rewrite the chief. Somebody in the reporter was called, met with the town person to discuss options. That's not transparency. I'm disappointed because there was a BYOB party at the town hall last week and I don't see discussion of it on the agenda tonight. So I hope that we're going to raise some revenue, which we all want to be sorely making. I charged those people $500 a day, but if we're going to be lenient, I hope there'll be transparency about that so that the next time somebody on the other side of the tracks goes to obey a ordinance, they get the same legalcy. There's a pattern here. It's lack of accountability and it's lack of transparency. And we will be stronger, fighter town if we follow those principles, not just in the good times, but in the bad times. I am, I am really pleased to say that what you were able to pull together last Saturday for the swales. You wrote a very eloquent piece in front porch forum about the fabulous efforts. You never mentioned that I have been reminding you since last July that we were wasting town resources by allowing those whales to die. So you know when the action started? The action? The action started when I picked up the phone and called the secretary of the Agency of Natural Resources. That's NINR for short. I am excited about the town taking care of those whales, but we have branded hats. True fact, we have more town management overhand than any other town our size in the entire state of Vermont. So it shouldn't take 10 months to get something going, especially the volunteers on it. I'm really disappointed we had to cut the police car altogether from our budget because we were being held hostage by the electric at all costs, remember the word? Police cars should not be electric, yet they aren't safe or recommended for police work in dangerous areas. These are our guys and the owls out there, people. They're keeping us safe from all sorts of things, including Brandon's drug problem, which I'm sure is no worse than, but is certainly equal to every other small town in the world and all the crime that follows that. Sit down with the chief, ask him what his people get two or three calls for every single night. And lastly, I'm rather stunned that our newspaper of record is the same one that held up public page of the Brandon report by a full 24 hours a day so that it could be beefed up to include more pro-budget content after the last election. In fact, one of the select board told me, quote, again, quote, "I told the other members of the board that we've been outsold," unquote. I think that person had out marked it. Brian, I want to apologize to you. When I say select board, I don't include you. And actually, it doesn't look to me like rest of this land we're including much higher. You two need to sleep that long? You had to go and put your mind by talking to them, right? But most of us can relate to them. You work 16 hours a day, take care of the dad who's a mother in town, and you're putting the daughter through college. I hope by the time she comes back, we sorted ourselves out. I could go on and on, but I'm sure that it would get caught. Go on, love. So here's the question, people. I tonight ask the select board to postpone the scheduled vote for May 21 and go line by line through the budget, through the budget meetings, listen to their recommendations, and if they are in the rigor good of the town, even if contrary to your personal interests, I ask you to adopt any sign. If you don't, I'll vote no. I want a vote that will not be here next year, but yeah, this year. And if the budget goes through anyway, I call on all of you citizens, you need to step up and demand accountability and demand transparency because what happens this year fuels what will happen next year and so on and so forth. It's a great town. There are some areas in which we have lost our way. Let's pull it back under the track. It's your board, it's your mom.
Any other public comments?
David May, please. Jonathan Threes. I love living in this town and we all know that we can legitimately separate each other and that is part of life. I don't know any of you personally with one exception because I have a daughter in the same class, but I'm sure all of you are here because you are trying to do what's right for the town. And unless there's extremely strong evidence to the contrary, we should all give each other credit to believe that we are working the best for the town, even if we personally disagree with what we're doing. So I thank all of you for your time and your service and I appreciate the effort that goes into it. I want to state that many of the services that may be seen as bloat are the same services that could prevent people from getting up on drugs. We have to choose where to invest our money. Do we invest money now in creating a wonderful place with lots of opportunity for everyone? When I was in high school, I lived in a small town in Kansas and the place where all of the kids hung out was a small park that you couldn't see from anywhere. Half those kids ended up doing drugs because that's all there was to do in that town. My friends and I, we played video games and tended to creating video games and now all of us are software engineers. Right? You give kids opportunities to do things that they love and that's not just Bill Moore over there, although I thank you for all the time and effort that you do. It's creating the entire environment, ensuring that everything that we have in this town guides kids to creative, productive outlets. And that's critically important in order to have a beautiful future. Regardless of age, I hope all of us want tomorrow to be better than today. A decade to be better than tomorrow and a century to be better than a decade. I won't be alive in a century, but I want this town to be stronger and better than at that time than it is today. And so I want all of us to give each other the benefit of the doubt. We may disagree strongly and that's fine. I've spent most of my life explaining what Republicans mean to Democrats and what Democrats need Republicans. And they usually figure out that they all want the same thing in the end, they just want to go about it in different ways. And that's okay. And that requires compromise and working together. And we need to make sure that we all give forward the trust to each other to believe that we are all doing what we believe is best. And I may strongly disagree with the methods that you have, but that doesn't mean that I don't agree with your goals and it doesn't mean that I believe that you are a bad person. Part of politics is always a little bit, perhaps quiet back with conversations that may be part of it. I hate politics, but the reason I hate politics. But I love political theory. I love talking through the problems and trying to understand each other. I love working together to create a better tomorrow. So I thank the select board for all of the work that you do. And I thank everyone who shows up, including those who are moving away, for coming and speaking your mind and doing it truthfully and honestly with effort to make this town a better place. Thank you.
All right, David.
Not very respectful. I'd like to speak. At the last special select board meeting on May 6th, board chair for St. John's Hill said that it's truly, that if this is truly about affordability, the new budget revisions should pass.
the new budget revisions should pass, and I agree. However, for someone that have been coming to these meetings since the beginning of the budget revision and longer, it's become a thorn. You can rest assured that another no vote is a vote of no confidence. For the last however many months this has been preceding the elections, actually, I've watched you systematically ignore absolutely any person's input except Town Manager Seth Hopkins. This list includes Budget Committee members Neil Silas, Jen Coolidge, and Tricia Welch, all of whom are knowledgeable citizens who volunteer their time and efforts only to be dismissed. Not only have you ignored area citizens, you have ignored your own board members, Tracy Lyman and Brian Coolidge. You've gone so far as to blame Tracy for the mess you're in there. I'm going to quote him from last week. I've had word from some people that was kind of upsetting to me, especially when he came from a town official, that I was part of the problem for this budget not passing because I wanted to see the ask for in the budget. When I put that in there, I also suggested $150,000 we cut. I also had $150,000 that I suggested we cut from other places in the budget. But that fell upon deaf ears. Now, that was Tracy's. That was Tracy's exactly. Even you might have had deaf ears, but the rest of us can't see. Scaffolding and creative accounting have become a regular practice of this town in 17. And I even go into the gaslighting techniques I saw a few weeks ago towards area citizens who oppose the budget. The only true cuts you have made are to provide convenience, public safety, and infrastructure. And to quote that Bailey from last week's meeting, government agencies are to provide safety and security and necessary infrastructure. Meanwhile, the new town manager deals nothing, including his $10,000 a year government tracking system and assistant town manager to a tune of an extra seven grand per year, both of which prove he is incapable of his job and negate any savings to the town of hiring a new town manager, when the truth is suggesting that we need to go back to the drawing board and hire another new town manager instead. How many voices do you need to ignore before we all decide this is an authoritarian rule and not democracy at all? Speaking of which, I have never seen the word democracy thrown in the face of registered voters as it has been this year by select board members. You've heard at least one area citizen question the process. I question integrity. Even when I think I can trust you, it will be wrong. For example, let's take Mr. Moore's alleged text message during last week's meeting that caused an admission for several minutes, which, by the way, to my understanding, is against open voting laws. It may have brought to the attention of area voters that Ms. Fiel Nelson was seemingly entering the hall after the break with a former select board member and then immediately made a motion for appropriation for being. Now, I was told that if she wants to give her power away as an elected official to other people, there's nothing wrong or illegal about it. But there might be some who voted for her that feel differently. I have been presented the impression that there are only five select board members, not six. Collectively, you've lost overconfidence. Personally, I feel like six out of seven people on the panel need to be replaced. Even if the budget passes, I plan to work on shutting light on the process and all that I've witnessed in these last few months. The fact that we've gone from 2.6% increase to now 2.5% increase demonstrates that we tend to do our best to be careful.
Any other comments from the chair?
Mike, please. So I'm Representative Stephanie Jerome, and I just wanted to... I just want to say hello. I'm not getting down again. And the legislature adjourned on Tuesday, Saturday morning at 2:30 in the morning. And there's a streaming session. I think I understand all the issues that we had at hand. And I believe the legislature did an excellent job in getting bills passed that we need to get passed. And there were a couple of bills that were specific to Brandon that I wanted to just let you know about. We did manage to pass the, through the House and Senate, the bill to encourage Fire Department 1 and Fire Department 2. All missile charge rules need to be approved under legislature. So there were 27 of those missile charge bills that got passed this year. That still needs to be signed by the governor. And then the other thing is to, as to Ken, the flubber lengthy bill, we've been able to change water and wastewater workers so that they are essential employees. I think we look back and all the flooding that happened over the past few years, that those workers are absolutely essential. And so that is a big deal. I worked a great counter on all of those. And so then the bill that I was working on, Vice Chairman of the Commerce Committee, and the bill that I worked on that I am really, really proud about, and it passed out of the House, passed in the Senate, and it passed out of the House 1393, is the data privacy bill, which protects our online privacy, our biohazard, and our sensitive data that can be bought, sold, or shared amongst the largest corporations. Then also very important, so I think all of us in term of understanding, that we're willing to safeguard our kids, protect their behaviors of social media. And so we also created safeguards for children in this bill as well. So again, Vermont, and this bill is signed by the governor, so it will be the first bill likely in the country, or you know, the bills that have been passed throughout the country on data privacy, but it's the first one where on this primary action. So citizens can sue if harm had been done to them. So it's one of the little labor, some of the very local bills that we passed and worked on, and then I'll assemble everyone as well. And then probably a nice quick addition on the report. I'll put together a hearing and session summary that I'll put out. Probably be putting articles in the paper of more detail of the bills that passed this legislative session. I hope people enjoy those articles. And then going back to the legislature on June 17th and 18th, just in case the governor does not sign some of those bills that were reported to the legislature. Thank you. And as always, feel free to contact me if you have my information. I think it's available on the newspaper, my website, and the general assembly's website. Thank you.
Anyone else have some other comments? Yes, pretty much. If you can, that way you can anyone.
Just a comment to on my district event. The DVA, Brandon's Downtown Alliance, which enhances the business in this district event, there's always been people who volunteers and has put out the tables downtown, the yellowtop tables near bakery and up my greatest place. And on Saturday, we will be planting and putting out all the flower pots. This year, more than 60 flower pots are going out on the streets. And we are looking for support from the public, who always comes through to help us on this. And we get numerous, all kinds of volunteers to help get the work done. And it gives a huge pride, really beautiful appearance to the town. And just to make note that I, as a one, have been enjoying the tulips this past week immensely. And these flower pots will take over after the tulips are faded and last the whole season long. The merchants that I've talked with, every single one who has a pot in front of their place, said too. And they're all agreed to water and maintain them through the season. So this will be, I believe, the 13th year that we put flower pots out on the street. And I believe it really does make our town look organized. It makes it look like our town, where I cooperate and we put projects together that impress the public and are there for the enjoyment of the locals as well. So thank you. And if you want to contribute to the flower pots, send a check to DVA Post Office Box 361. Thank you. The plantings are going on this Saturday, the 18th.
And any, any other comments?
I'd like to respond to some of the statements that have been made. Because it's a public space, and when comments are made that are true, it's important that they're responses. I will say that I love living in Brandon too. I think it's a wonderful community. A lot of good things happening here. We are a board of five. None of us have any power by ourselves. We only have a power in the way that we act as a board. And so it's not true when you claim one of us or another is doing one thing or another because the reality is we act as a board. We had good participation in our budget process. We actually listened to a lot of points of view. As you realize, every time you get up to speak, people are allowed to share their ideas and give their points of view. Listening is different than agreeing. And the suggestion that the solution to difference is that we should simply agree with the other person is not the way decision-making happens. And so I would also suggest that the scare claim people are losing their homes to taxes is harmful for our community. In the state of Vermont, they've actually come up with an income sensitivity program for many years now that guarantee that you never get taxed more than a reasonable percentage of your income, which means if the taxes go up and you get income sensitivity, your taxes don't go up at all. It's not a percentage, it's actually zero. And thus, the suggestion that our raising funds to run our town is causing them to lose their homes is an unhelpful, fearful proposition. There is not a lot of fact in this budget. I have been on the board for six years now. This is my sixth year. And we have been below inflation for all of the last five years, which means that if anything, we've been getting tighter every year. And I have great respect for the boards that came before me. When I started, it wasn't a fat budget, but we got it covered. What many people don't realize is we have as much risk of raising too little money as raising too much money. Because if we don't raise enough money, our town does not succeed. And the way we came up with our first numbers was by listening thoughtfully to the proposal that was brought to us from our town manager and was generated by his department chairs. And specifically, the one that is the most reminiscent to me is from our road home, who suggested that he needed $300,000 a year to keep our roads in shape. And he showed us why this was true, and it was convincing, which is why he convinced the board, including Mr. Lyman, to support that. I still believe that was a reasonable number. We need to cut that to get the budget to pass. And I'm confident that this new budget will pass, but the roads are not going to fix themselves. At some point, we're going to have to raise that money to work on these roads. The suggestion that electric police cars are not ready for the prime time is simply not true. For many, many years, at least five major police departments all over the country have been using electric police cars. And I will also say that we have not committed to buying electric police cars. That will be a decision of the board. It will not be by any individual person. And that when that happens, it will be a reflection of the facts at hand at the time and the judgment the board makes, the judgment of the board that's elected by the town. And lastly, I would suggest that any aspersions that we have a lack of management or bloated management is simply not true. I have great confidence in our management team. And I will say, to correct the facts again, that we're saving money on the management team we have from the previous town management. Because both Seth's salary and the increase for Bill's salary is less than we used to pay the previous town manager. And so you're simply wrong when you suggest it is costing us more with our current management team. Thank you.
I'd like to join in one very quick fact. In very nice reading and going through some emails that I've received and looking at the FY '25 budget revote that's coming up for a budget amount of $3,328,882, to be exact. I want to highlight that that figure is $17,000 lower than last year's approved budget. And it's even roughly $1,300 lower than two years ago's budget. So that would mean that there's no pattern here. And I just don't understand where we come up with that idea. So that's my response. A short rebuttal if you want.
My calculations included the $10,000 for government tracking program that stuff needs to do its job.
That's incorrect.
$10,000 recurring every year from what I...
It is recurring. It has nothing to do with Seth's ability to do his job. It actually is an enhancement that we've needed for many years, and the board supports entirely.
And I have a request also. I saw your post on Front Porch Forum yesterday about the 2.5% increase. And I respectfully request that you add to it the details of the appropriation and how much that will increase the overall property taxes.
Then if anything is available, would you like it now?
I would like it on Front Porch Forum so that it's transparent.
You'll be able to put it on Front Porch Forum if you like.
Fine, you will.
Great.
We're moving on to item six. Yes. All right, thank you. Early block. First, I would like to thank Jonathan for your comments about children. I mean, it comes down to the young adults in this town. A little history is I was raised in a small farm in Southern Illinois. When I was 16, my mother told my father, "We have to get out of here, put building and my brother up, have to raise five other kids." Unbeknownst to me and my younger brother at the time, we left and moved to northwest Wisconsin, Indian Valley National Forest. Two years later, I lost two of my best friends to drugs. A year later, I lost another two of my best friends to drugs. A year after that, I lost one of my very best friends to a car accident that was caused by a driver on the road. by a driver on the road. Grayville had a great little red center, you know, things were going on. But within the last five years, we lived there, pretty much just right up the mountain path. There was no baseball in the summer. There was a little sporting event, you know. They compared the field to basketball team. Now, Miami, Grayville was probably thirty-five square miles and had a population of fourteen more kids or people, but nonetheless. Drugs has a way of tearing towns apart. And Jonathan, you're absolutely right. And Bill, thank you very much for the work that you do to give our youth something to I talked to a couple of other people in town that have younger kids. And I asked what their kids are doing today. They said, "Well, they're out back digging a hole or doing something because I turned the laptop off so they can't play the video game." Super. Something I used to do in my boy a lot, you know, he'd be a little snippy with me. I'd just sit down for a break and walk in the door one night. So I was like, "Go ahead and play the video game." So did make my wife very happy. When I graduated high school in Northwest Pennsylvania, I kissed my mom and said, "I'm out of here. I have to leave. There's a whole road out there, and I don't want you to see it." And boy, did I see it. But shortly thereafter, drugs hit that town. So, and it's sad, and I have to go back to these two towns because going through those are on the hot. I went back to Grayville probably ten years ago, and I laid in the middle of a highway that ran through the town and just laid there, waiting for a car to come by. That's how best for the town. There was no traffic at all. So my sister pulled in her car, put me in an ass, and get out of the street. So the work that Bill does is instrumental in anything that else can get done in this town. We can sit here and whine and moan about taxes all we want, but if we don't take care of our young people or young adults, this town will turn into a drug town. It will. I've seen it twice in my own eyes. As far as the town manager goes, I have lived in several towns, have always just voted yes. I have never seen a town manager have an answer like that. Most of them ruffle newspapers, don't know what they're looking for, "I'll have to get back to you on that." I don't think I've really heard them say that more than maybe once, maybe twice, in the last three, four months I've been coming to these meetings. And you're just not going to find too many people who can handle the job like Seth does and have an answer for you immediately. And there's no way for him to hide anything when a man has an answer for you just like that. And I think it's ludicrous for anybody to stand up here and accuse anybody of the select board or the town management of any wrongdoing unless they are willing to put hard facts on the table and name the names for saying ignorance. But otherwise, it did not happen. From a comment that was made earlier about no vote, now, I have all the spectrum of you, and a lot of people that I've talked to have a lot of respect for all of them, every one of them. All I have to say is, let's hope good things come out of the next vote, and let's move on. Because if we don't spend a little money, or if we want to take a little load on, this town will start to falter. So we have to keep maintaining the services that we have in this town. If we let them slip, it will be nearly impossible to get them back in this day and age. So, thank you.
Hi, I'm Karen Roberts. I was a parole officer for approximately fifteen years in the drug unit in Robben in Madison County as a licensed counselor. You can bring horses to water, which can't make you breathe. I see people from all walks of life, rich, poor, involved in sports, not involved in sports, succumb to drugs, whether it be alcohol, or it be prescriptions, or whether it be street drugs. There are hardly recreation programs, but if you think that's the be-all, catch-all to stop drug use and to stop some of the crazy things that these get to doing, that's not the answer. It's part of the answer. I don't, I'm not sure there's anyone here that could actually say that people that don't play, that play sports, don't do drugs. Look at the professional sports players that a lot of people worship. How can them are addicted to God knows what? If they're not addicted to drugs and alcohol, they're addicted to money. So you can go and you can say that this program or that program is going to help a kid, that thing we can be all and all, that's not it. You've got to be good active parents, number one. You've got to lay ground rules for your kids. Don't put them off and play basketball. Play basketball with them. That means more to your kids than a program. Have a good day.
Good time, woman. We're moving on to item six. Consider a certificate of approval for a location of the salvage yard. Information in our packet. Anything else there? This is to continue or renew of this salvage yard undertaking on Pinkworth Road, been granted. Looks quite good, the board.
So for the purpose of continuing the discussion, adding a motion that we improve the location of the salvage yard?
Discussion then?
The information looked in order in the packet. Some of this is a problem I don't know about, and I think it's a reasonable difference.
I don't know whether there's any complaints in this company. It's been there for many, many years. No other discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve the salvage yard location? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The votes, no one, that passes. Item seven on the agenda is to approve a branded revolving loan fund for Common Ground LLC. Mr. Moore, I have some information.
Hello. Yes, I do. So as a background for folks that might not know the town, Brandon has a revolving loan fund. The loan fund was established with USDA background development funds. They were loaned to Nexus Chipmaker that used to be on the hills, Al Gore's elegance, and they made it active to a loan fund the town oversees using a committee. Loans are used to help promote business, help businesses grow. Is it just me, or am I kidding all these nights? And so with that, I'd like to present what I wrote in my letter to the select board. That's from the committee members. Can I read this to you? May 9, 2024. Select board members, on May 7, branded revolving loan fund committee meant to consider a loan request from Erin and Andy Donner and principals for the Common Ground LLC to fund the creation of a custom catering food truck for the expansion of their business in Maze Place. Maze Mobile represents another way for their brick and mortar business to grow to fit the needs of the town. With their limited catering and food truck jobs and absurd proof of concept in the last six years without dedicated equipment, the unrealized growth in marketing opportunities will produce a significant revenue stream for their already successful business. A meticulously researched project business plan that accompanied the loan request published by Stella granted for revolving loan fund track record while the revolving loan fund members in attendance, the decision to approve was unanimous. The amount of the loan will be $25,000, the terms will be a 6.5% interest rate, amortized as an eighty-four month loan with a balloon payment at sixty months secured by first security interest in all equipment purchased for the trailer, first security account receivables for Maze Place, and second security interest in the trailer with a bid to be provided on. As is customary, all revolving loan funds' personal guarantees will be signed by all the principals of the corporation. Erin and Andy have been that special type of business owner to respond to the very needs of the Brandon community. This expansion will make that even easier for them to continue to do so. Erin and Andy are here to answer any questions you might have.
Bill, can you just, for the record, for people that don't know the origin of the loan fund, that it's not taxpayer running, correct?
And it's not rated taxpayer running. So what happened USDA, lately, these early nineties loan money to Nexus for their formation, and they paid it back. And instead of paying it back, the USDA, they came into these loan funds and they established these loan funds so that the town can loan that money out using the committee to vet the folks. These are loans of bank loans to promote business within the town. It's committee members sit on the board, many financial organizations that are represented on the board, as well as just folks in the public. It's a community-minded board, and they do a nice job of vetting these folks.
Thank you, Bill. And the select board's part of this is to basically bless the results of the revolving loan fund board. So I just want to clarify that, if you want, I'll wait.
Yeah, I make the motion that we approve the branded revolving loan fund to Common Ground LLC. I was just the one to say that I'm grateful that you're investing your energy and making our town a better place. And I'm also grateful to Bill Moore and the committee, because the more we can get these funds into the community, doing the things, the better. It's not meant to sit in the back and gain interest. It's really meant to be out there doing the best. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion in the second. Any other questions from the board? Not heard. All in favor of the motion to approve? Say aye.
Aye.
And now the, on to item eight, which is another loan fund. So I will let Bill Moore present that also.
Same background as before. This meeting is held on the same night. On May 7, the branded revolving loan fund committee meant to consider a loan request for Kenneth Lee or his new business venture, Twenty-Two Park Eatery. His new venture represents a plan to provide a food service business that provides a dining and takeout experience, a location that has seen much success serving both locals and tourists who visit Brandon. The scenery will be located in the Ants Building adjacent to Brandon Inn, formerly Foley Taco Bean, and will have a varied menu of food and beer, as well as serving ice cream. The plan is to be open on Mondays as well. The committee members were impressed by the energy and vision of the veteran chef and voted unanimously to approve the full amount requested. The amount of the loan is $48,000. The terms will be 6.5% interest rate, as amortized as an eighty-four month loan with a balloon payment at sixty months, secured by first security interest accounts receivable, Twenty-Two Park Eatery, second security interest in equipment purchase for Foley Taco Bean, and a lead on the personal real estate property of Kenneth Lee. Re- I'm going to skip over the line of the revolving loan fund's personal guarantees. And though to relocate the eatery located at this prominent location will only help provide Brandon residents and visitors with more options for affordable, quality dining experience in the heart of our downtown. Kenneth Lee is here, answering any questions, if you might have.
Hello. I would like to say that I love the town of Brandon. I grew up here. It has changed dramatically from when I was a child. It is significantly different, and I would like to thank Bill for that. And I have a lot of comments, but I'm going to save them, and I'm excited for a great future and continue to help promote that. I will.
I would change the comment that I went to school with Ken and all. I don't ever remember meeting Ken, because I always known Ken. And it's really great to have somebody that I ran into a few years back or something.
Blue's, I think.
Yeah, Blue's. That it's really cool to see more people who grew up here choosing to come back and knowing what they're getting into. It's one thing to stay here, and that's awesome. Like, however you get here is awesome, whatever. But there's something really cool about growing up here, moving away, and then choosing to come back. It just makes a statement about how our town is looking and how many opportunities there are for adults, for work, and that people see that it's a place where they'd like to share it with their kids, that, you know, that he's thinking this is a place he'd like his daughters and family. Really, it's a compliment to all of us.
So I assume you'd like to make a motion?
Sure. I would love to make the motion that we approve this revolving loan fund for Kenneth Lee for Twenty-Two Park Eatery.
Second. Any other discussion on the board?
Please open on Mondays.
So.
I just wanted to say, in the State House, many, many towns would love having a revolving loan fund like Brandon's and how lucky we are that this fund was set up and we've dumped out so many businesses. And I see many people in the legislature who would love to replicate this same type of funding mechanism that just a one will make a Brandon able to have and do so successfully. And I think if you look all around our town and see how this little bit of money has helped so many businesses and has had, I think, unbelievable success in repayment as well.
Karen, on this one?
Yeah. Bill, I just have a quick question. Has everybody been paying regularly and is concurrent with the former loans that were given out? Or has anyone gone default or behind?
We have not had a hundred percent. I would say there have been loans that have been forgiven. I asked them to write out a loan a few years ago, and there are some folks that some should be repaid.
Okay. I was just curious.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. All in favor of approving the loan? Please say aye. Monday.
Mr. Grant, may I speak just on that topic for you? And I want the people to know again that this loan fund exists for people in Brandon. There's still money in there. If you have an idea of a business, if you're looking to expand, if you're looking for a business, look for it to expand your business, come and see us, because that money is there. We're sitting in the bank, not making any money. It's there for people in Brandon to do the things in Brandon.
Okay, moving on. Item nine, received the results of the FY23 audit. Mr. Hopkins, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The town received the audit of the year end of June 30, 2023. On April 19, 2024, the auditors expressed an unmodified opinion. Sometimes that's called an unqualified audit, sometimes that's called a clean audit. They did provide a couple of recommendations for internal controls, which are listed on the government memo that provided to you. The responses below my signature. The first one is from the town treasurer, and the second one is from the town bookkeeper in regards to how they propose to go forward, taking into account the auditor's note about some stale data checks and the fact that certain utility invoices traditionally have not been signed before they were presented to the select board for approval.
The audit items have been worked on and clarified. They'd be clear the next time, I'm assuming.
These two plans, yeah. So there are the phone bills that were already made and official, the phone bills, which currently satisfy the task. are satisfied with that. That is not a practice that the town has been following in the last minute. And Sue has a plan there for sometimes checks will get issued and not be hashed, and the auditors would let those kind of taken care of more than periodically, you know, taken care of our own businesses.
So this is just a temporary, no action necessary. Thank you. Item 9A, a letter from the tree ward, please.
I don't believe it's here. I could present on his behalf if you'd like, Mr. Chair. So the tree ward, Neil Silens, intends to remove two public shade trees, one in the right way at 115 Steinberg Road, one in the right way at 52 Mark Street. The reason for both trees to be removed is that they are in a deteriorated condition, and there is probable failure of the tree in the near term and potential damage to persons and property. If the select board approves his intent, then there will be a 15-day waiting period so that these trees would not be removed earlier than May 29th, and there will be an intervening select board meeting between now and then.
Pleasure with the board?
Do we need to make a motion to approve? Because of the way that he wrote the warning, I could just say that I would suggest that the select board needs to approve this intent. We approve the tree warrant. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Further discussion? All in favor of approval of taking the two trees down? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No one? No passing of the buck. Item 10, physical. It builds.
I make a motion to pass. We approve the warrants for $49,000, $2.57.
A second.
Your motion in the second. I would highlight in here that also all of the appropriations, the last payment of the appropriations that were approved a year ago are in there, which makes the warrant seem higher, because paying what the taxpayers approved last year.
I have a question. What is, when it says Stephen Bissett installed a bungler, what is that? Like, have you gone? Or just like eight years ago?
So there was a permanent installation of a cabinet to store firearms at the police station.
Oh.
So Steve did that work for the town.
A bungler like the...
Yes.
I was picturing like, I don't know.
Any other questions? Under it. All in favor of paying the warrant? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No one? You're being billed. We will have a tenant reset before moving into executive session.